Thank you everyone for your patience with the technology issues. This is Sarah Mallis, Chair of the zoning Board of Appeals on call. The zoning Board of Appeals 40B, new term of our quarter on Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022 at 4:16pm. I have with me in the room Jim Dietrich, who's an alternate, Brian Solacey, James Mitchell, myself, John Veneras, Sean Zahn, who's an alternate, and Catherine Howe, along with Town Council George Pucci, Town Administrator Greg Fettersfield, and the Clerk Gail Hunch. As a reminder, we will not be taking any comment in this meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is to begin deliberations on the 40B comprehensive permit application of Jeffrey and of SLB School Street LLC. We will be... The goal of this meeting is to hopefully make a determination regarding whether we deny the comprehensive permit or we will approve it with conditions to look at the remaining waivers that we need to either approve or deny and to hopefully come up with a general set of conditions that will enable Town Council to commence the draft of the decision. Okay? So do you want to look at the environmental waivers first or talk about deny versus approved conditions first?
I think we should discuss deny versus...
Okay, I agree. Okay. So if we deny the comprehensive permit, it's my understanding that we cannot include in the decision like all of the conditions that we have disagreed to. If we do approve the conditions, then we can get the conditions, all that have been approved by the applicant as well as other conditions in the decision. If he appeals, then the HAC will relook at all of the conditions, not necessarily just ones that we add to it. And the other thing is that he has to show it's more uneconomic than the existing project.
One of the questions I have for Town Council regarding the decision whether to approve the conditions, these waiver requests, or to deny the comprehensive permit entirely. What are the ramifications if we deny? My loose understanding at this point is if we deny, it will very likely be appealed.
Right.
And based on prior conversations with Town Council, besides taking a lot of time and costing the town significant amount of money illegally, we would likely lose. And if we were to lose, which again is likely, my understanding is that all of this work, all of the conditions, all of the requirements we've added into, all the concessions the developers pay based on our requests, it basically needs thrown out the window and you can build the project as originally intended. So if that's the case, in my view, denying it is kind of a de facto letting the developer do whatever he wants at some point down the road. And I don't think, unless I'm missing something, I don't think that's approved. That's their action process.
Right, that's what concerns me. But he would be controlled by the scheme that he's providing to us. But one of my concerns is the ADA compliance sidewalk did not appeal on this campaign, even though he agreed to do it.
I'm actually not sure.
Make sure you speak up.
I'm not...
The microphone's that way far.
Hi, I'm not sure that we are likely to lose if we were to deny. I don't know. That's actually something I, you know, if we can launch a closed session, I don't know if we're going to do this other meeting. But absolutely, I would take advice from Council on, because I don't know that it's true with this particular project.
Well, let's try to post a question. Two moments.
Yes, Mr. Pucci.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm George Pucci. Hopefully people can hear me. I don't know if they can see me, that's probably better. I'm off pretty edge here. Just to clarify and follow up to that, to your questions, both concerns that were raised. So the basic framework is I always like to advise the board that you should really act on this permit application in accordance with your best sense of the substantial evidence in the record and how you think that you should act on it. You're acting as the local board with respect to local regulations, like the wetlands regulations that you have. You should act on those in the shoes of the Conservation Commission. If you find that standards have not been met under those and that local needs dictate denial of those waivers, then you should go ahead and do that and not worry so much about what may or may not happen on appeal. So I, you know, the framework that I bring to it is exercise your jurisdiction over this project to the best of your ability based on substantial evidence in the record. However that comes out, we will defend on appeal. In the event of a denial of the permit, there will be an initial burden of proof that is on the applicant, that he will have to prove that... No, in the event of a denial, it takes an initial burden of proof away from the developer so that the developer does not have to prove anything about project economics. In the event of an approval with conditions, the developer will first bear the burden of proof of proving that the conditions singly or in the aggregate render the project uneconomic. And then if he proves that, then the burden shifts to the board to justify by substantial evidence why local needs compel the issuance of those conditions. So there's a little bit of a difference in terms of the burden of proof at the HAC in terms of a denial versus an approval with conditions. The reason I always try to emphasize to the board that you should act on this application to the best of your ability. If you're far off field legally, I'll let you know. But you know, you're a competent board, you have, you bring different areas of expertise and knowledge of local concerns. You've heard the evidence, you have the ability to act on this permit. So that's what my focus would be if I were you. Let us deal with the, with any potential appeal when that happens. So if you think that there's substantial evidence on the record to justify a denial of the permit, then you should discuss that. See if you reach consensus on that council draft date, a draft denial decision. If you think that the better route is to look at it that it should be an approval with conditions with action on individual waiver requests, then if that's a consensus, I'll draft a draft comprehensive permit decision with that in mind. So, and in terms of what could happen on appeal, there most likely will be an appeal of any decision that you render. And if that happens, everything is off the table in terms of what the developer agreed to during this process. So in the event of an appeal, either an appeal of a denial or an appeal of an approval with conditions that the developer is unhappy with certain of the conditions that you oppose or is unhappy with your denial or grant of waivers only to a certain extent that he's not fully satisfied with, he'll appeal everything. And I don't mean this personal to this developer. I just mean generally the way this works. When the developers end up before the HAC, everything is off the table, those before the board, and they're trying the whole thing in. So anything they agree to during that process is off the table. Anything that you think they might have agreed to, if they're happy with the decision, is also off the table.
But George, we're not building the record if we don't build in all of the conditions. We're not going to appeal, right?
So that's a framework that you would want to look at. Some boards that have represented end up denying a permit and they issue a whole bunch of conditions thinking that that will show the work that they did on it or that on appeal, those conditions will be looked at, either affirmed or denied. It won't happen. In the event of a denial, you should just focus on the grounds for denial, do a denial decision. If you're focused on conditions that you want to see imposed on this project, then you want to have that dialogue. You want to see condition by condition, what conditions you would want to impose on this project or you want to act on the waiver request. And so the only way you'll have that analysis of conditions is in the event of an approval with conditions.
So let's go back to deny versus approval with conditions.
So I guess my feeling is that based on the commonly overwhelming amount of evidence from the Concom, from traffic and safety with respect to a second means of egress, those are two very huge issues that concern all the citizens. We have an eighty support whatsoever from the input, another letter, something like that. I would be leaning towards a denial based on what George just said, that everything's going to be renegotiated after the fact. But I'm also willing to concede a consensus if you decide to take the approvals with conditions on these waivers. Decide to add waivers. So I could go either way. But I would tell you that I do think there is significant and substantial evidence from the conservation, the burnout pools, wildlife destruction, and the second means of egress issue. So on the safety side, I think there is reasonable and, I'm not sure it's overwhelming, but substantial detriment to the town and to our decision making.
Oh, you can all split those in as conditions.
We can.
Brian?
I couldn't articulate it any better than James did. I think we're in a situation where we're being asked to compromise entire environmental ecosystem with thirty, forty or fifty units. And the developers trying to shuffle, square pegging around whole. And I think that the... I understand both sides. And as James did say, I agree a lot of ways. But right now, my gut is that this is just a denial straight out. And let him try to... To try to... The 40B process is antiquated.
Doesn't matter. That's what people are surprised by.
My point is this, okay? Is that when, there was never concerns about environmental issues years ago.
Right.
Okay, they are concerns now, okay? And I think we have to look at that. We have to look at public safety and the environment. And for that reason, I think that we're in a good standing as far as the denial goes.
Well, my concern is on the public safety side. We did not have support from the fire chief or a second emergency egress. Police chief supports a second emergency egress for pedestrians or who go further to support it, for automobiles. So how does that impact your evidence with a lack of that support?
Well, we have been told that the police chief, excuse me, the fire chief doesn't have the right to say or he's only about opinion with regard to second egress. That's a question.
To answer your question, respond to your comments. I think that, I think he's overstating it a bit to say that the fire chief disagrees with the need for a second egress. I read his letter as being very limited in saying this complies with fire code. Not he thinks it's a good idea, not he thinks it's safe, not even he approves of the conception design. Just technically, under the fire code, it complies.
It meets the requirement.
So I always think, I guess I don't put as much... And then you have the police chief saying he would like to see us not get the pedestrian egress. Again, he's not condemning the whole. I mean, I think those are redundant feelings, but I don't think they're determinative. And I don't think you should look at that as a choice.
The other point I'd like to make is that we've had several peer reviews, the architectural peer review in particular, that said repeatedly that this project is too big and the site is too difficult. There are too many obstacles to overcome. So in terms of the economic hardship, I think that developers are going to be hard pressed to make this a profitable project with all of our conditions.
Agreed.
And if it's too big and it's a bad site, or unsuitable, I should say, for this kind of massive housing development, I do think that's grounds for, again, that's another reason for the...
We can't deny based on economics.
Okay, but I'm saying based on inappropriateness of the site and size of the project. If you look at context, if you look at demographics of the neighborhood and the town, I think you have to start arguing in that regard.
I think...
I just need to, I'm sorry. Just getting a little bit of feedback from people who are listening. Make sure you speak a little slower and project to the speaker.
Okay. Sorry. I've been considering this project very carefully, as I'm sure all of you have, over many months. And I have honestly started out thinking that this was probably going to be something that we would approve with a lot of conditions. But as we've gotten further along in this project, I cannot see how we can put enough conditions on this to make it a safe bet for the town. I am worried about the environmental damage. I'm worried about public safety. I'm worried about weather effects in the town. Frankly, I'm worried about whether we should also partner in this year. He's made a lot of statements, he's made a lot of carefully crafted statements, like when we were talking about his standing with HAC and he said, "Go ahead and call and ask them if I'm allowed to work on this project." That's not really what we were asking, right? We were asking him about his overall standing. We've made a lot of caveat comments. And I am not sure if we put conditions on. I just, I don't have a level of trust that they're going to be honored in good faith. And so I think this could be a disaster for the town. Another concern that I have is that, as several members of the public and public commentators pointed out, and you put it out, John, his financials may be significantly understated. And in that case, he could start a project and not be able to finish it. We can't put it back together, even if we have a performance on with money. We can't put it back. So once this starts, it starts. And for all of those reasons, I am leaning towards denial than an approval with condition, although I'm happy to talk about it and how my mind changes. I don't have a close mind, but that's where I landed after many months of thinking about it.
I think Catherine raised a good point that if we do approve this with conditions, the town and the code authorities need to make sure that all these conditions are even met. And when you have a town with one building inspector and one DPW, you know, manager, how is that going to be all approved on?
Can I make one point?
Yes, Sean.
Well, as Pucci said, is that, I mean, whatever conditions we put on there, he's more than likely going to appeal.
Right.
So there are no guarantees. And there's been a few things that he's said along the way. One of them that really stuck out with me when we were going through the environmental, when he brought up about heritage. And he was like, "Wow, well, Gerald, wow." And I'm like, "So, but we'll do that at a later time." So I'm like, "He's got to add stuff in that's not even considered right now." So we've got to be consider, you know, consider that also. There's going to be changes this goes on and the impacts that they're going to have.
The, another comment is we talked about the actual conditions. He comes back and says, "Why are you...?" "Oh, I'm glad..." I'm sorry. I mumbled too. One of the issues with Town Council is that as we add conditions, he then comes back and says, "Well, now it makes the project uneconomic."
Right.
Okay, so we're not talking economics there. And the reality there is the project is probably uneconomic anyway. Okay, so we add one condition and that tips the balance. He's playing really tight to the best of him. And like, and if this was, if it wasn't for the hammer of the state, this would never be done. This is a project that is known everywhere. Okay? And as I said earlier, for thirty units of affordable housing, it just doesn't work for this town.
Jim, do you have comments?
John, can I just add one thing? Just to follow up a little bit of economics. Sarah, if I can add this. There was a recent case from the state's highest court. They upheld a concept that was recently adopted by the Housing Appeals Committee that it's the developer's right to pursue a project that is uneconomic. And that still gives the developer the right to challenge conditions that render the project more uneconomic. And I know that seems funny, but it is actual case law now. From the state's highest court, they upheld the HAC's authority to impose that type of condition. So that may or may not be relevant to your discussion, but I did want you to know all these comments. It's clearly hot off the presses.
The, the project costs have gone up, what, twenty million from the beginning? Will the housing, mass housing finance relook at the financials before they get final approval and they're likely to change or not?
They will look at it before they grant final approval.
Yeah.
Whether that's likely to change or not, I'm not sure yet. At this point, we need a lot more information about that.
Because he provided us with a new pro forma with costs substantially higher and then the input on the public record that they're even perhaps understated by.
Yeah, I just wanted the board to be aware that that is a standard that could get applied in an appeal that he can go forward, even if it's uneconomic. And if you make it more uneconomic, he has the ability to challenge it further. I mean, the policy, it seems funny, but the stated policy, at least from the state's highest court perspective, is that they want to encourage the building of affordable housing. So if the developer is willing to incur the risk of something that they can only get four percent, that's their right to do that. And that is consistent with the purpose of the statute.
But they also need the finance.
Absolutely.
I have a question for you.
Speak up, Catherine.
Yeah, Mr. Pucci, I have a question for you. And that is, if we deny it and it goes on appeal and the applicant appeals this, what if the applicant's burden of proof on appeal for a denial?
It's your burden of proof.
To show that it's not...
To show that the denial is consistent with local needs.
Right, okay.
And that, that those local needs outweigh the...
Need for hours of...
So I mean, you know, the thing is about that, and I know there were, there's heavy opposition with the project, but I've never rendered an opinion to this board about you'll win or lose at HAC or anything along those lines. So I just want to be clear about that. But there is something you do want to look at realistically. The Housing Appeals Committee is set up typically in favor of development. So I just want you to know that that is a difficult burden for a board to overcome. That, you know, the compelling reasons for denial always need for housing. It's very difficult to overcome that burden. But that doesn't mean that I'm saying the winner loses or anything like that will depend on the diversity in that event. And you know, the thing is about it is it's not that easy to defend an approval with conditions by the right, because it's still the same... I'm not saying that the Housing Appeals Committee does anything improper. They're a state agency charged with, you know, pursuing the objectives of the statute, which is to build affordable housing, you know? And that is, just is what it is. So both types of decisions are very difficult to defend on appeal. So if you're thinking, "Oh, I want to do a denial versus an approval with conditions" or vice versa because of my chances of success at the HAC, you really shouldn't think that way. You should just put it more on, "I'm a board member, I've received evidence, this is how I feel about this project, gives us substantial evidence to justify the decision that I would have received rendered in that case."
Do you have something else, John?
Well, the local need that I see in this town is that we need quality, safe, affordable housing. And when you have thirty-four units restricted to eighty percent of AMI, that to me is not affordable housing. To me, affordable housing is rents restricted at sixty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI, thirty percent AMI. I see this as workforce housing, a small component of workforce housing, and then a larger market rate component. A project that is large scale on its own island. The kids can't walk safely to school. You need a car to do anything from this development. So I truly feel the real local need for this town is real affordable housing, quality affordable housing, not housing that's off on some island somewhere on a site that is really undevelopable. I mean, all you have to do is look at the acquisition, the land acquisition is almost five million dollars, but yet it appraises at one point six million dollars. Fifteen acres appraising for one point six million dollars in Manchester. That's unheard of. What that tells me is that the appraiser determines that site is really unbuildable. And that's where you have that difference between the actual land acquisition and the appraised value. So just, I guess, going back to local need again, we don't need a large market rate development that looks like a shopping mall. We need real affordable housing that blends in with the community, that's closer to downtown, close to public transportation. And those are just my thoughts, just about the local need. Thank you.
So if we're going to deny it, what's our substantial evidence?
I think there's, I haven't spoken yet.
Oh, Sarah, Jim, go ahead.
I've been looking, listening to all this. And Catherine and John have presented some very good points. It would, we do need more affordable housing, but this is not going to provide it for us. It's going to provide some affordable housing. It's going to provide a housing where our people will be nowhere near the center of the village. They will be driving everywhere. The site is a difficult at best site. I feel that we should deny it. And some of the conditions for denial is it is not a good site to build this. It is not going to add to the benefit to the town or to any of the residents who live there. And we could probably develop an even longer list of issues for our denial. I'm sure we can.
I think my leaning towards a denial is based on the conservation concerns, environmental concerns, and the aforementioned safety concerns. Also, just the inappropriateness of this larger scale project. I believe the town needs affordable housing, but it's just not this. It's too much, it's too big, and the site is too difficult.
Can I just add, what really concerns me is the idea of having roughly seven percent of the population in the town living off of one roadway, one driveway. Call it a road, call it a driveway, whatever you want to call it. That to me, and a single building, by the way.
Right next to the driveway.
Right next to the driveway. So, and I've seen it happen in my career before, where you finish constructing a building and then it just burns down. In my case, it's because the sensor is outside, didn't turn on, and the entire building burnt down. So what happens now if this happens here on a, off of a driveway that's half mile long, that winds and it's got thirty foot retaining walls? I just think about that all the time. That for me, like, we can talk about burnout pools and, you know, wetlands and situations of that, you know? Those are, for me, that gets very technical. But just looking at this from a common sense approach, I'm not comfortable with the idea of that many people living in one building off one little roadway like that. I'm just not.
Well, and I remember a few years ago, there was big news about Concomplex. And we threw one where you connect to one twenty-eight and somebody dropped a cigarette in the mulch and the whole building went down before this group of system could engage. This was on the outside. The, if it's next to the driveway, I would think.
The thing that's really bothered me about this entire project is the developer, when questioned on virtually any issue that's, any controversial issue, has basically said, "I don't care, the state will let me do whatever I want." Well, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do something. And that's important because, as John has said, we're going to have a large percentage of the residents of the town living on an island essentially. An island that is connected with an eighteen hundred foot driveway. In bad weather, that's going to be a real major issue. I think that there's just too many impracticalities of this whole project that we should deny it and we should very carefully structure our denial so that when it's appealed and the court listens to it, maybe they will pay attention. Yes.
Any something else, John?
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm in totally agreement with everybody. I just the head, um, asking for surrender in variance is just, it's a huge signal to me that this project is not that absurd.
And and I would also like to say something that has really bothered me from the last meeting and during Mr. Engler's speaking speech at one point and he said something like, you know, you can do this and you can put a bunch of conditions on it and this is going to be a great project, but if you don't, then I'm going to win anyway, you're going to have a worse building. Well, you know what? That doesn't signal to me that he cares about this town. And he cares about what's good for the residents of this town or the building he's creating. Directing us with a worse building if we don't approve what he wants? That's not the kind of person I like to be a business with.
So can I just ask, um, I mean, this might be a stupid question, but let's say this does go to appeal and the court's hearing this, don't they look back at those videos and and see the threats and see how how stuff goes down on some of these calls? And and say, okay, well, you know, yeah, I mean, they they have, they are right, and that's.
John, can you talk about AJC reports?
Yeah, but AJC.
Well, so AJC is he would appeal to AJC and they would come down with a decision.
No, but someone has.
Then somebody, but then they can, no, it's not them. Then they can go to the court system to appeal the AJC decision.
Okay, but at some point, isn't there a discovery period when someone is reviewing all the documentation and and perhaps the meeting minutes? Or they just just begin to make a decision?
Okay, Mr. Gucci?
Yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't go down quite as cleanly as you would think. Um, if there are issues for, uh, let me, let me just back it up and and describe all the process of work at HAC. So in the event of an appeal to the HAC, the the hearing is de novo, which means all undue evidence. So it's not based on the record before the ZBA. Certainly, evidence that came before the ZBA will be part of those proceedings. But the HAC is not limited to the record of proceedings that was before the board. Uh, when those, uh, proceedings, uh, go ahead, the way that the cases are tried is they call it an administrative hearing. But what the parties do is they'll set up a schedule, uh, that uh, the parties file a pre-file testimony, which is what what an attorney would typically elicit from his or her witnesses on direct examination. So instead of doing that initial direct examination P one A, doing the form of pre-file testimony, which is like an affidavit filed out with the with the committee. Then the administrative hearing, which is like a trial with a sonar, is limited to cross-examination of the other party's witnesses. So the only, the only place where something like what you're talking about would come out would be, say, my cross-examination of the developer at the hearing. Sure, I I can tell you the the focus is, the focus is heavily on the technical issues that were before the board.
Sure.
When you get into, you know, I I I I like to consider myself a a good cross-examiner. So I do tend to have things in cross-examination that are interesting, you know, of credibility issues or anything like that. But I can tell you, it's not a free-for-all. They they will limit it, they will limit your your kind of going appeal of the issues that are before them. And then then the last issue that you need to know about is the Housing Appeals Committee decision is also appealable to superior court. But that that, uh, case won't be limited to the record. So there will be no discovery or cross-examination of that decision.
Is that case limited to the record of the Housing Appeals decision or is it limited to the record from here?
Correct, it will be the, it will be the state administrative agencies' records.
Okay.
But remember, your party with proceedings, any evidence that you want to be part of that record will come up during the HAC process.
And we can have expert witnesses as part of an appeal to the HAC.
You would have, you would have, uh, fact witnesses and expert witnesses, correct. Uh, and the only, the only other thing I would mention is you got to pay your own witnesses at that point. The applicant is not paying for your expert witnesses, uh, similar to the way they funded your peer reviewers.
Yeah, and just my overall point was just that, you know, I want the appropriate authorities to understand what led us to our decision making. You know, it's a culmination of the back-and-forth discussion we had over our calls, review of uh, due diligence, et cetera. And that was just my, you know, my basis for that question.
I think it's accurate. I mean, validity.
A lot of that.
I'm sorry, I think the validity of that argument is good. You know, this wasn't, this decision wasn't made in a vacuum. There were a number of factors, uh, and it might have been minor, but it was a factor that led us to this decision. So I I I think there are major factors. I wouldn't call any of these, uh, if the burden of proof of a denial during the appeal process is on us, I think we have substantial evidence, peer review, expert testimony that will confer, um, concur with our decision-making and prove that, um, we have reasonable demands here or reasonable accusations about what the impact will be to this town, and they're all negative. And so, uh, probably we've talked this to them. It's probably three different areas where we should.
So are we ready to take a vote? Well, Sarah, I know you, I know what's your opinion. You're the the chair, and we haven't really heard much from you.
I mean, the way I was leaning is to approve the conditions so that we could establish the record containing all the conditions and all of the conditions he agreed to. Because he agreed to a lot of conditions. And I don't want to lose those. That's my concern. But if there's a way of putting a lot of that into a denial decision, then I'm fine with it. I mean, we've got two pages worth of concessions he's made.
I got a question for counsel. If if he has agreed to those, is he totally binding to those?
No, so all of those are off on the appeal.
No, I mean, right now, is, if he could, that he agreed, if we if we do reduce conditions, see, our cap agrees. Since he can now appeal.
No, that's the issue, is that if he's unhappy with anything in there, he's going to appeal, and all of those are off.
And and the chances are, we would put conditions in for, sounds like a second E S, sounds like initially burnout pool, so he's likely to appeal.
So my my thought is then we put the whole thing in his lap and that we have to have the, all of this kind of agree.
In other words, a denial.
A denial.
And I agree that it's important that, uh, he's made some concessions, that we have some agreement on some of these orders. But if the net result is that he just appeals it and everything gets thrown out, then I think we're we're better off and cleaner by just denying it outright.
I mean, AJC will go through every single condition you put in there and decide whether to uphold it or not.
But again, as as.
Yes, if it was with conditions.
Gucci has just advised us that everything's.
Yeah, they're still going to look at every condition you put in there.
Yes, you would have the ability to defend those conditions. Again, it.
I don't think we can commission it. I just, I honestly don't think that there's a way to let's just take public safety that we were just talking about. Developers told us a million times that second road is not feasible. If you put a second road as a condition, he's going to say it's uneconomic and he maybe went about that. And, you know, so I don't, I don't think there's a way we can make the commission.
I'm sure it's right that it's not a, that a second means progress, but also.
Maybe you can go back smaller.
Site is inappropriate.
I agree, yeah.
Because there's no easy way.
Right.
A second means progress.
I agree.
It's kind of a circular conversation.
Yeah.
Too big and not appropriate piece of layout.
So we want to take a vote?
I would be careful about taking a vote at this point in the kind of, if you vote now to deny a permit,
Yeah.
then you've got fifteen days to follow that decision. What what I would recommend you do instead is if you think you have, if you think you have consensus,
Okay.
I would recommend maybe instructing counsel to do a draft denial decision. And then you would have a further deliberation that you would give a pack of that at that time.
Of people on agreement with that.
So can I ask a question? So let's say you pursue that avenue. I assume we haven't got another meeting in two weeks or so, and then by then maybe you'll have something for us to review? Is that how it would play out?
Yes, I would have that to you in advance of your deliberations. Also, you'd have a chance to look at it. You wouldn't be able to you wouldn't be able to communicate as a quorum on it in advance of the meeting, but you should have it as individual numbers in advance of the deliberations so that you would be prepared to discuss it.
Yeah.
Sarah, you want to?
I I'm fine with it. I mean, I, you know.
You don't want to put all the.
Well, it's, it's difficult to know until you see a draft of the decision.
And then if we don't like the draft, we we haven't, we haven't painted ourselves a call.
Right, no, right, right. Just using my time.
And money.
Uh, we could, we could say we don't like the 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 decision to deny, go back to.
I think this is the one, of course, because it gives us some flexibility to read that.
Yeah, that's one. Um, no, we're not going to vote.
Right.
Well, we're.
You don't even have to listen to that. I mean, I I get the consensus, but I take my instructions from the chair. Her instructions to me are always, well, you know, representing you very well. So if those are the instructions from her, I would have that to you in advance of your next session.
So we'll move forward with the draft decision to deny. Um, and it is August third. Um, the, when do you think the draft decision could be done, Mr. Gucci?
I can have the draft decision to by the twelfth.
Okay.
Right at the twelfth. Unless you're telling me you're not going to meet the week of the fifteenth.
Well, we've got to talk about that.
But but counting back, if you if you use that, um, the only, the only thing I I would want is, I'll just I'll take more time if your deliberations are further out from there. If your deliberations are the week of the fifteenth,
Yeah.
I would recommend I have that to by close to the summer twelfth.
We we've got to talk about that. So the week of the fifteenth, we have our normal monthly ZBA meeting on Wednesday the seventeenth.
Really?
With third, third Wednesday with four days before us because we we had to postpone, um, July. So I don't think we can do the forty B in that meeting. So is there another day that week people can meet?
Like Thursday, Thursday. And and let me check on Thursday, because I may have a hearing on your town, but I think Monday or Tuesday I can do it. Let me check on Thursday.
I know Tuesday. I have, uh, third Wednesday, third Monday tied up.
Right.
Are we doing trees on on the eighteen?
No.
Okay, so I do have trees.
We have the.
If they're still be there.
Tuesday the sixteen?
That's doable.
Mr. Gucci, is that doable?
That works great, yeah.
Um, what time do we want to meet?
A little later in January.
Anytime we're streaming on that there.
What time are we thinking? Leaving, our usual time, or earlier?
October? I don't know. What do people want? Do we want?
I'm around, it's five o'clock almost.
Okay. Um, how about six thirty?
Six, six thirty, six thirty to be ready.
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Tuesday, August sixteenth, we will receive the draft on August twelve. So I will expect that people will read that draft. Prior to the meeting, I'm in, prepared to discuss it because, um, I'm sure there'll be revisions to it, um, and so they'll need to be more time and we have to conclude our decision no later than September today.
And we're here, right, same time, meeting in person, knowing how to work the screen.
We've just got to make sure that this one's true.
We're talking anyway.
Um, okay, so is there anything else we need to discuss?
I'm still a little fuzzy on Mr. Gucci's comments about um, conditions and how conditions can be tossed out by the Housing Authority. So maybe you can address that again for my benefit. Maybe I'm the only one who's fuzzy on it. But it seems that if conditions, if you, if conditions can be basically discarded, then why bother? What's the point? Um, now, maybe I'm too practical, and I'm not an attorney. Um, but I I I like, I like to feel comfortable with this saying, I I I'm in favor of denial right now. But I want to make sure I look at all the options and I don't, I still feel a little fuzzy on that. And so if you could indulge me, I would appreciate it.
Yes, um, I'll try. I don't know, well, did you not, first board members expressed that concern? I I had a a board a few years ago and they were talking about an approval with conditions that were substantially reducing a project and they were imposing some very strategic conditions. And then a Housing Appeals Committee came out on a different tone and that was an approval with conditions. And the Housing Appeals Committee kind of went through each condition, they struck every single one. And so that member said, what the hell, why don't we just deny? And I said, well, because then you have no chance to defend your conditions if you go to the HAC. Uh, and he was fine with that risk. And then the the board ended up voting on approval with conditions. He voted against, he voted, he wanted to deny the project. So it is counterintuitive, what can happen with these conditions. The only thing I would say, the only thing that has legal certainty with regard to your question is if you deny it, the burden is immediately on the board to justify that local concerns, local needs outweigh the need for housing. There's no burden on the on the, uh, account at all, except to prove that this project meets state and federal standards is basically a non-burden. So the burden, burden goes to you. If you have a denial, you have no ability to defend any conditions that you might have wanted to to impose. Some boards will some boards have recited a whole bunch of conditions. They do a denial decision that told us approval and then at the end they deny it, thinking that the reviewing board will look at their conditions and pick and choose what they still want to impose. And it just doesn't work that way.
Yeah, but but when you're justifying the reasons for the denial, you can include in that justification, I would think, all of the conditions
Oh, what thought you did?
That have been required.
What thought you, right.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's kind of the opportunity is is when you have to justify your denial.
You bring that in your denial.
No, I'm, it's when you go to HAC, I think you do.
Well, you can do it, your decision will will describe how you got to.
Okay, yeah.
And essentially, it's almost like a site plan review. The way I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from the board is you're you're leaning toward denial. You don't want to just do a two-page denial decision. You want to explain how you got there. And and just like, similar to what site plan review, you know, say it's not as a bright site plan review, but site plan review that there's a possibility of a denial. Most of the time, the site plan review board will go through everything, they go through all the conditions, and in the end they say, you know what? We just still cannot condition this project in a way that satisfies X, Y, Z concerns, and therefore we're going to deny. So in that, in that case, they have set out all the potential conditions on approval. And then they explain at the end why they simply cannot go ahead and grant the project, because even with all those conditions, they still can't satisfy two key elements. And therefore, they're going to deny the project.
So then if we deny, if we deny and we state in our denial all the reasons for our denial, that will be taken under consideration by the board?
The committee.
The committee.
Yes, we would have to defend that.
You will have to defend, we will have to defend that in front of the committee.
Yes.
Okay, so at least there'll be a hearing for those things.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it okay, the whole thing, you'll have to justify why you denied it.
Okay, I'm straight now. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I think at this point, I would rather defend the denial than. And I think at this point, I would rather defend the denial than defend.
Yes.
I just, I think that's the more proven approach. And we may, we may change our minds as we go through this. No pressure.
Anything else? And I'm making motion to adjourn?
I would, I would formally continue your deliberations from that date in fact, sir. Just so the public knows.
If that was not a public dinner?
Yes, it's a public meeting.
Yeah.
So you wanna do it, I, I would just recommend you do that. Just move formally, uh, you know, date and time and, and if it's going to be hybrid the way this is, I would just justify that. Trust me, you wanna be overly cautious in this.
Yeah. So I, I move to um, continue the deliberations on the forty B on the end of the term with Jeffrey Enigma of SOB Sports Street LLC to Tuesday, August sixteenth at six thirty PM via hybrid.
Start right there.
June seconds. Owen, David? Yes.
Yes, yes.
I still have to local this video. Then I'll make a motion to adjourn. So, so, Owen, David?
Yes.
Thank you very much.